Okay, Sue, hopefully you can hear us. We cannot hear you. All right. Hi, everybody. I'm in for Jessica today. I would ask, actually, well, first, it's 7:00, and for all of us that are here, if there is any emergency and we need to leave, we leave through these two exit doors and head out to the parking lot. Before we start, Kelsey and commissioners, I had to type this. I asked that we recognize a moment of silence. Since we last met, America has lost too many souls to mass shootings. 10 days ago, we lost 10 people in Buffalo, New York, which is the hometown to a number of South Burlington residents who are suffering still. And I don't know if you've heard, but just hours ago, in Uvalde, Texas, an incomprehensible 14 children and one teacher were killed in an elementary school containing grades 2 through 4. Their families and community are suffering as we sit here tonight. It's the largest that we've experienced since
Where was that?
In Uvalde, Texas. Yes.
Today.
Yes. So, in honor of the people lost in these tragedies, I ask that together we recognize a moment of silence. Thank you. So we'll begin with comments from the public that are not on the agenda. Would you like to say anything that's not on the agenda? Let us know your name, please. And you can.
Okay, the green light's on.
Great.
My name is Rick Dahlstrom. I came to the last couple of planning commission meetings prior to sending the LDR to the city council. I presented my case about 1505 Dorset Street being included in the LDR, which adversely affected the way I can use my property. I understood that I was late to the game. I didn't understand, I just don't know enough about the politics around here and the the idea that a commission in the city council could actually restrict private property. But I've since found out that that is, in fact, the case. In fact, this gentleman asked me at the end of the meeting if there was a house on the property, which there is. It's been there since 1967. It's a 44-acre parcel. Prior to the last LDR, about 40% to 45% of the property was restricted by the NRP's, the, or is that what it is? Natural Resource Protection. Right now, it's with a new one, it's 95% of my property is under that protection. I don't expect that this committee would be able to go through every inch of the village or the city. So I can understand why, you know, and I wasn't aware enough to present my case early on the process because frankly, for land development regulation, I thought it applied to developers and not to private property owners like myself. So I didn't, I wasn't in my wheelhouse to understand what you were trying to accomplish, and I didn't think that I was affected by that. So when when I talked to an engineer, he said, "Oh, no, you really need to get on it." So that's why I came to those last couple of meetings. You passed the LDR. Monica, I did send an email to everybody. Apparently Monica was the only one that received it. I had the endangered species report. I had pictures of the property. There's a FAA airport, designated airport, in the middle of the property. There are a lot of reasons why it shouldn't be NRP, but again, it got passed through because I was too late to prevent it. You had to do your job. So I went to city council. I voiced my opinion there. There was, it was 3 to 2 passed it, and there was a lot of, the dissenters said that in my case and people like me, private property owners, in fact, I think it came up in your committee meeting, was that the, there was going to be adverse effect on small property owners, single-family owners, that got swallowed into the big black hole that you developed for developers. I'm one of them. My neighbors on either side of me, Partillo and Noah Hyman, again, all our property was now NRP. They don't have any plans of building. I don't want to subdivide my land. I don't want to, I'm not a developer. I just, I want to build a house on my property. I went to Paul Connor, asked for an application for a permit, and he told me I had to subdivide, which I don't want to do. I just want to build a house for my son. So he gave me the options. He said, "Well, you can build a tiny house next year's," or you know, within 100 feet. I got 44 acres. I don't want a tiny house next to my house, which in fact, the septic is a couple hundred yards away. But the LDR that you passed sucks in a lot of people like myself. I didn't necessarily do any study as to who got affected, other than my two neighbors. And so when city council asked for relief, and they they basically told me I had to talk to the planning commission because it's your job to fix mistakes in the LDR. And then you would then send it back to the city council, and they'd have a public hearings and all that. So the whole process, you know, it just, you know, I got swept aside. And I just think that in general, the LDR was it's good intentions, but there's some, been some mistakes made in the process that adversely affect people that just want to make, you know, put down another house on my property. Or, and Noah Hyman said, "Well, you know, his kids aren't that age yet," but he said, "Well, yeah, I want to put some houses on mine, maybe." But he didn't, you know, I don't have any plans. But anyway, the city council, I talked to Matt Cota, and he said that the process is, talked to this committee, and you have to make the determination that there were mistakes made. And I know that at the meeting that I went to, and you got my email, Monica, you you kind of, sort of, somewhat came to my defense and said, "Wait a minute, we made a mistake." But again, you know, yeah, I voted because it was, again, I was too late, and I understood that because you've been working on it for so long, you had to pass it on. Anyway, that's my pitch. I just want to fix errors in the, in the LDR that affect people like myself. I don't know what else, what else to say, other than, you know, I my son is the one actually going to build the house. He'd be here instead of me because that was the deal. He was going to build his house. And I didn't, you know, I was going to let him build on my property, but he's deployed with the guard over in Europe. So I'm trying to fill in for him so that, because he's got a builder lined up, but we can't do anything. And the builder said, you know, he can start breaking ground in the fall. But, you know, I don't know what the process is, what it would take. Matt Cota said the best-case scenario would be probably six weeks. So I don't expect that. But, you know, it'd be, it'd be nice if the situation was addressed. And again, it's, you know, the, I've read that LDR as it applies to small, smaller proper, private property owners, not the developers. Now, the developers, yeah, the regulation is meant for them, I think, because they don't live on these places where they develop. I'm, I'm living where I'm, where I want to have another house. I like the property out in front of me. And I mentioned the council. I said, "I can put my property into current use with the state." That means I give it to the, to the state for conservation, instead of the city taking my property by nature of this NRP, you know, and and that's what I plan on doing anyway. You know, I like I like sitting out there and looking at these meadows. I have farmers come hay in the, in the two times during the year. I like the conservation point, but that LDR just restricts the use of my property the way I want to use it. So, any questions? I don't know. I'm rambling here. I apologize. So.
The, the use of this time is for you to bring your comments and questions to us and for us to hear them. And then we would need to not probably address it immediately, but if we have questions, we can ask, and then we can discuss potentially at what point we might want to consider or have the opportunity to consider, which we are looking at our work plan for the next period of time, and maybe there's an opportunity within that to readdress. For clarification, I have one clarifying question that can help me, and if anyone else does, you mentioned that 95% is now an NRP. Are your, is your family interested in building outside of your available 5%? Is that the problem? I mean, I understand.
Believe it or not, the, the 5%, there's a stream there. At the front end, at the Dorset side, there's, my property goes down to Dorset, not quite Dorset Street because Anjani lives there, but it goes down to her property. And right at the end of my property, that 5%, there's a stream and a pond there, and that's not NRP. I don't know. I don't know how the lines were drawn.
I do have a question. We did the carve-out, but I don't believe it pertains to NRP, though, no?
No.
No.
That was for the conservation PUD. So we do have, my instinct to saying, we have a number of items that we will be, over time, looking at from this last round of our LDR changes, and that was, it's on our work plan. I just don't, I don't have the work plan in front of us. I don't know if any of us do. So I think that would, that would probably be when we would come back to discuss if this would be part of that.
I would actually suggest that you make a formal, you write your request in writing and submit it to the planning department. And then I can bring that request, I'm a staff member, so I, and I can bring that request to the planning commission in that sort of written request, and that can be added to the work plan if the commission decides to do so.
Okay. When my son was still here before he deployed, we both met with Paul Connor and asked for a permit to build a house, and he gave me a permit to do a subdivision. And I told, I don't want to do some, plus it cost me like $10,000 for a permit. You know, I mean, that's for a developer, that's, that's costly. You know, I just want to build a house. So I can do that. I'll present that and give you a written request, and that goes to the planning commission, right?
Yep. It can be addressed to the planning commission. If you want to email it, you can email it to planning@southburlingtonvt.gov. And you can find that contact information on the website.
Very good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is anyone online interested in a public comment not pertaining to the agenda? I'm not seeing anyone, so we will move to number three. Does any commissioner have an announcement they'd like to share?
I do have a very brief comment. I was looking at the minutes. And Monica, you had mentioned Minneapolis about the R1 zoning. And apropos of that, the Wall Street Journal the other day had an article with regard to a company, and I think there are many of them across the country now, that are purchasing individual homes. In this particular case, this one company bought 300 homes outside of Atlanta and are using it for rental. And, you know, it's just one of these many little things that we have to deal with here potentially, maybe not right now. But if you suddenly have, you know, a certain amount of, you know, attractive chamberlain, affordable homes kind of deal turned into VRBO. So just a heads up, and maybe it's not coming to us or not, but it's, it's happening countrywide.
Kelsey, can you remind me, and I feel like I asked this at a meeting, and I forgot what the answer was. Meghan Emery made a motion or a presentation to the city council about rental, and, and I don't remember what the next step of that was. Is that potentially coming to us?
My understanding is that the city council has not taken that up at this time.
Okay.
If the council decides to take that up as a policy priority or something else for the next fiscal year, then it could come to the planning commission through, through that channel. It could also come up as something that is addressed in some form in the comprehensive plan process or something else. But my understanding is, as of right now, it didn't gain much traction at the city council level as something to task to the planning commission right now. That's not to say it won't happen in three months, six months, a year, whatever it is, but that's my understanding of the status right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have one very happy announcement. I went to a UVM graduation party over the weekend, and that UVM graduate is staying in Vermont and was hired by Beta.
Nice.
Nice. So we've got one. We got one young one who's staying. I didn't ask. I know. I didn't ask. Yay. Let's let them stay. Okay, staff. Report.
Yep, nothing besides what's actually in the, was written in the packet. Nothing else kind of came up. The only other thing is I had mentioned at one point in, deeper in the packet, under one of the agenda items, if I had any update from city council on some outreach edits to the outreach poll, there hasn't been anything drafted yet. And so I just wanted to hit that point before we, we got to that. So there's nothing really changed at this point for that.
Okay. So I guess we move on to number four, which
Yes, we do.
is a big one. So the document, which maybe, Kelsey, you can take us through, looks at an actual draft, and it does also recognize that some commissioners have communicated some comments to you. And this is our night to get those comments in. So keeping that in mind, what would you like to do in regard to what you have here? I mean, you have a draft, which that in itself, we can spend time on. Do you want to start more strategically, or do you want to go into the draft?
So the, just as a little roadmap through what I sent to everybody, the first, the Article 19, transferable development rights, is, was created as a new article out of what was previously in Article 9 as part of the SEQ, because it's the transfer, the TDRs are no longer solely housed in the SEQ. It didn't make sense for them to stay in Article 9. This was the easiest way to keep references to and from Article 9 clean. There were other options for moving the SEQ pieces other places, but this is what made the most sense. So the Article 19 draft is wholly new language that incorporates some of the old TDR pieces. It's very similar to a draft, the draft that I presented at the end of April with some of the noted changes that I called out in the memo. There are a few other wording changes based on some feedback from commissioners that staff agreed with, and we're happy to incorporate. Michael sent me some, some wording changes that I did incorporate. But then after Article 19, the, the following pages are all of the changes that would need to happen to make 19 and the contents of it mesh with the rest of the LDRs. So there's some edits to things like definitions, the zoning districts, the residential districts. And then you can go down from there. Anything blue is changes, if it's, you know, it's track changes. If anything is stricken, it's cut. If anything is underlined, it was added. So I don't know if it makes sense to, maybe it makes sense to talk about the substance of 19 first and see what, what everybody is thinking about that. If there are further changes from 9, in, in the Article 19, that's the meat of the TDR ordinance. And then we can move on to the, the other changes and see if there's anything else that people have comments on in, in this articles that are more reference related.
So we have about 25 minutes on the agenda to talk about this. This also, your message, your memo also indicates that we should have a conversation about whether to share this document with members of the public, the development community, before we take it any further. So that's a strategic discussion, and I do also think these other elements, which would have an impact on what the draft says, if people have other ideas, need to make sure that they have enough time before kind of getting in or along with getting into the weeds of the actual draft. So.
So there, yeah, there are two, two options for public engagement on this process. There's the, the option that we took more in the general PUD when we were trying to move it really quickly, where you finalize a draft to the, for the planning commission to finalize their draft of, of an ordinance, and then it go to public hearing, and then the pub, that public hearing was the opportunity for the public to engage. And then you can make some changes after that public hearing. The other option that I outlined here is doing a little more discussion and engagement with the public ahead of time. Members of the public, developers, other interested parties, possibly other committees, like the Economic Development Committee, you know, anyone, anyone else that you'd want to talk to, Affordable Housing, anyone that you'd want to bring into this process that may have more substantive changes than we were hoping for the previous round. Because what I think you don't want to do is spend a lot of time completely finalizing language and then hear from some, some community, developers, neighbors, whoever it is, that it's completely wrong, in their opinion, and then have to kind of back up and start over if you, if you agreed with their feedback. So that's what we're suggesting is possibly floating this, taking, taking a cup, another meeting or two, floating this to members of the public before it's actually worn for a public hearing, trying to get some targeted feedback from specific large developers, possibly other committees that I've already, I've already said all that, that, you can do that before warning the public hearing. Or you can choose to do what you've done, what you did in the previous round, which was the public hearing is that opportunity.
So.
That's the normal procedure would be to draft something and then have a public hearing.
Yeah.
I think we could get very much, very involved in multiple discussions here if we did it piecemeal. So my sense is that we should probably strict, stick to the procedure that we, we've used in the past and do our thing as best we can. We're not likely to get it completely wrong.
Sure.
But, yeah, at, at a public hearing, we will hear what people think, what they like and what they don't like.
I guess it comes down to, from, from the staff perspective, it comes down to whether or not you think that there will be that you will make significant changes to the substance based on feedback. If developers came in and said we, like, this doesn't work financially. This makes no sense. No one's going to use this. Is that, is that a motivation to rewrite it kind of from the beginning or not? Because if it's, if it's not, then it's absolutely fine to just kind of keep marching on. I'm, I'm concerned about spending time completely finalizing something that then is, is unworkable to one or more interested groups in the city.
Well, and also to, to, to Michael's point, though, to be, to clarify, our, our process isn't always just to immediately draft and then go to a public hearing. I mean, there's generally ample time to gather feedback, which we have not asked for yet, to, to fine tune it before a public hearing, which we can approve a draft of in that meeting to go to city council. So I don't know that it's out of our norm to do some of this preliminary outreach, and in such a big change, I think it is a good idea personally. So if, if there's, there's three things we want to talk about tonight. Do we do outreach first, or do we just go with a draft? Do we discuss what other ideas people have, more strategic ideas people have? And do we look at the specific language that's in this draft right now? And since these other, to me, and you, please tell me if anyone disagrees, because these first two are more strategic and can end up changing the language within. Personally, I would love to hear everybody's perspective on whether we share publicly first and, and seek some targeted feedback. Yes or no? And then discuss, does anyone have, I mean, this draft is primarily based on density. So are there other strategic ideas? I think, Michael, you may have shared some strategic ideas that we can discuss as well, and other people may have them too, as topics, so that you can see, Kelsey, how that may or may not fit within what you've already written. And then can we put the closing time into discussing the details of the draft?
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yep. The other option is to adopt, well, move the draft forward to public hearing, but then delay that public hearing a little bit farther and have some of those conversations, just in case something significant comes up. You can always cancel a public hearing and re-warn it for a, for a later date if, if something changed. But if there was a desire amongst commissioners to kind of go with the draft that we have, warn a public hearing, intending it for it to be in July, later July, that would give some time to have some of those conversations that if something in those conversations did come up, you could then push it out, but then you'd already, you would have warned the hearing in time to still have it. It's sort of a hybrid option between the two.
My perspective would be to follow the normal process. I don't see anything in here that's so significant that warrants that, you know, incremental engagement for the reason that the existing TR scheme remains in place with the SEQ. This is kind of incremental, trying to achieve some incremental benefits. You know, if we put it out there for a year or two and no one takes advantage of it, we can tweak it, right? No, no one's going to know, right? No one's going to know what's going to happen. So it just doesn't seem to me that it's so significant to warrant that. I would just put it out for public hearing using the normal process.
So again, normal process includes getting preliminary feedback.
Okay, I mean, like, I mean, people could join here, right, and give feedback, no?
So, so let, let me, let me just ask, let me ask this way. It sounds, it, it, to me, it seems like there are some strategic discussions, though, that could be critical to the draft. I know that there are some other commissioners that had strategic comments that they turned in. I think it would be fair to let people hear about that and discuss it. And then we can hopefully do that very quickly because we have this agenda item for 15 more minutes. I don't need to be like that about it. But, so if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Let's start with, we have the draft that we can talk about. Outside of that draft, where there are elements and other ideas as the memo, as the agenda calls for, that anyone would like to share beyond what is in this draft, so we can discuss whether it's worth trying to incorporate portions of that.
Yes, I, I do have some ideas that I'd like, some changes I'd like in the, in the language, which I sent out in April. And Kelsey and her staff have obviously included some of these suggestions. So the main ones relate to yes. How's that? They're better. I could be like a rock star here. The main ones I'm interested in are right at the beginning, A, authority, and B, purpose. And I'd, I'd sent some alternate language, and I'll, it's quick because I'll go through it. I changed the language in the second sentence, the transfer of development rights is hereby authorized in order to encourage the conservation of open space, natural resources, scenic views, agricultural, and I said agricultural lands rather than uses. And then I left out the next few words, and to direct development to priority areas for development within the city. Rather than to promote well-planned residential development, because this is, TDRs are a tool for conservation, not for development there, and the conservation is achieved by moving the development rights from one place to another. So it's not to promote well-planned residential development. It's, it's essentially to conserve, which is the first part of that authority statement. Which is the first part of that uh, authority statement. And then in the purpose.
Before you go on.
Yeah.
That sounds like reasonable language. I don't know, Kelsey, do you have any concerns with that language?
Not, not necessarily. I had a conversation with Paul about, about this language and we landed on what ended up in the draft as sort of a re, reaching some of the goals of what Michael was saying, but not totally others, but it's, it's, some of it's semantics, um, and just word choice and, and how we were reading it versus how Michael was reading it. So I think it's up to the, to the commission to decide. I think the TDR program, it is important to recognize, does do both things. And that's kind of how we wrote that um, authority and purpose section is the conservation side and the encouraging development in particular areas side is sort of the balance that we're striking. And that's how we wrote the language that's in the draft. But if commissioners like Michael's language better, then that's also fine.
Yeah, I, you know, um, Kelsey and, and Paul have used the language from the original TDR section in chapter nine, which, you know, had some unfortunate uh, and unforeseen consequences related to development of lands that may not have been suitable.
So, Michael, I'm sorry. I'm trying to see if other, because I, I think you, you made your, your case with that. Does anyone want to weigh in on that language change?
I like Michael's changes.
I'm, I'm actually okay with leaving the development part in there because I, I hear what you're saying, but I think also part of TDR is there is a development side of them. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay. It's, it's.
Yeah, no, I'm, I, I, I agree with you Duncan, but the development is achieved by, excuse me, by moving rights from one place to another. And it's not, I don't think it's appropriate to say we should be promoting well-planned residential development anywhere. Um, that's why I've put it as to direct it to the, the areas where we want development and it would do that.
And it's also what our, what our most recent LDR changes have done. It's directed.
And you know, it's.
Areas that we.
Sorry, um, you know, keeping it the way it was is a, it's like business as usual and we, we have to move away from uh, the old ways of doing things because we have an opportunity to do something new and really effective here.
So if it, and I would even hear from Ted or Paul, and we don't have to get everybody's feedback on every single comment, but Kelsey, you've heard now a pro and a con for leaving it. So maybe if staff can consider that in our next draft and your rationale for.
I mean, this is, this is not staff's draft. This is the, this is commission. As staff, our role is to to write and codify what the will of the commission is.
So, um, sorry, I'm trying to just keep things going. So, um, what, Paul and Ted, would you guys like to weigh in on, on this? So, and I, I actually support what Michael's saying, but I like the fact that you, you support development where it's called for, which to me is what we've just done in our last draft.
That's right in there, yeah.
And it's not, I don't feel that it's um, trying to cease, you know, development where it should be. So um, if it, it looks like the majority are in support of that, so we'll do that.
Okay.
Right?
Michael, if you could read the, starting with the word agricultural, what you have left.
After agricultural?
Yeah.
It's agricultural lands and to direct development to priority areas for development within the city. And there's a similar change in B, purpose, but basically the same few words have been changed. If I, I can read that quickly if you like, because it's much shorter.
Yep.
The purpose of this section is to regulate the use of transferable development rights to encourage preservation of open space. Specifically, it is the intention of this section to regulate the transfer of development rights from areas where land conservation is a priority to priority areas for development within the city. It's the, it's, it's the, it's the matching language for A.
Duncan, do you have a? Generally, everyone good, thumbs up?
Yeah, sure.
Thumbs up with that. Michael, any other strategic comment?
I had one related to the SEQ VR and VCE districts where we say in this draft that um, the for development has done a planned unit development, eight dwelling units per gross acre and six units per structure. And I think for districts within the SEQ, that is very, very dense for an area that in our current comprehensive plan calls for light density. And I would propose that we change that to four, four units per acre.
Yeah, just asking where, where that, where are you referencing this? Is it the table?
On the table.
Uh, on the table, yeah.
And what page is that?
Table nineteen dash one, sorry.
I guess, Michael, I, I would say, I, I do remember, we had a pretty robust conversation about that. Those SEQ districts, and I think we landed on those numbers, be the idea being that we wanted to promote some dense development around those village commercial and village residential areas.
In, in village residential and village commercial. Yeah, um, I just put that, I mean, and it's just that, in my view, and in the in the comprehensive plan, the SEQ uh, in general is, is stated as, as being lens, less dense, not, not dense development, light, light development. And we, we already have in some cases for PUDs something which I have a problem with, which is a minimum density of four.
So, Michael, I'm sorry to interrupt. It sounds to me like this is not TDR specific, but um, district specific. Which, similar to the gentleman that was just here before, is maybe something that we discuss if necessary, but we did.
That's right. I mean, because it's zoned, right? As max eight. I mean, the zoning is eight and I, I personally agree with Michael's sentiment, but it should probably be addressed more holistically.
Yeah, at a different time, yeah. So let's just maybe agree that that doesn't, yes, that doesn't fit within the TDR conversation. So we'll move from that one.
And just for us clarification, this is language that I picked up directly from the approved LDRs. This is nothing that was changed in this draft.
Yeah.
Okay.
And sorry, um, Monica, but my last strategic issue was you know, we haven't, uh, we've, we've taken some guidance, but we haven't done any, done anything, anything in a regulatory way uh, about the interim zoning open space report. And so I had written in, in my suggested changes that um, TDRs can, receiving areas uh, can be as specified in the table, but the parcels that are identified as high priority by the, by the interim zoning open space committee should not be eligible for additional density with TDRs. In other words, they should be, at least those that, that are undeveloped at, at the time that we finalize this regulation. And you know, these parcels are possibly ones that the city might might acquire. Um, or, or a conservation organization might, might acquire. So uh, it's antifertile to add density.
Okay, so that, so you made your statement and that's definitely a strategic.
Yeah.
TDR related. And so I, we can, we can go around on this. Um, I. So we're, that's definitely a strategic conversation that I think fits and others, please tell me if you're, if you agree or disagree. Um, but one point I would like to make for the record, because I've heard you say this before, um, the planning commission, commission most certainly did review the open space report and consider it. And we specifically talked about it when we reviewed the Arrowwood report, because the Arrowwood report is consistent with um, the resources on those lands. So just to be, just for the record, um, for folks listening, the open space report was absolutely repeatedly considered by this planning commission during that process. But, but your, your point is for the lands that the current article twelve does not isolate as a natural resource that's to be protected. Should those buildable lands be able to receive TDRs? That's your, that's your question.
Yeah, only those of, of the twenty or twenty-five that are currently undeveloped. Those would be the ones that I would say shouldn't receive TDR.
So that's a strategic question that I think um, feedback from the commission would be interesting to hear. Does anyone?
I'd like to understand um, the impact of that. And it, it kind of goes to the question I was trying to understand from the last meaning of how this um, transfer density relates to the PUDs, which had their own maximums, right? Where you don't need density and, you know, of these parcels, how many would be developed under the PUD regulations? Any of that, just like how well it would fit together and what the impact would be? Cause I don't understand it.
Well, that, how does that relate to whether you want to know which parcels Michael's talking about or not?
If the twenty-five or for the relevant parcels are otherwise, you know, subject to development under the PUD rules and the PUD rules don't need TDRs because you can build, you know, more than the zone maximum without the TDRs. And I, I, because I just don't know how this whole scheme hangs together.
So um, I think though, the, the type of PUD that you're referring to specifically is probably the TND, the traditional neighborhood PUD. That has very specific, you're right, has very specific building type requirements and street requirements and density requirements and all of these other things. Um, the conservation PUD allows for transfer of the density from the full parcel to the thirty percent of the parcel. Um, the general PUD does not allow inside that tool itself for additional density. Which, and the general PUD is what applies to many more properties at this point, many more properties and many more areas of the city, especially developed, developed and redevelopable areas um, along Wilson Road, Shelburne Road, et cetera. Sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, just for, for, uh, uh, to be efficient with our time. The question may be, what to, to Andrew's point, of these twenty-five parcels, which of them are not within the TND allowable? Which could even be reviewed potentially as a TDR candidate therefore. And at that point, because there may be three, we don't know.
Yeah.
And if that's the case, this is a worthy discussion and we probably need to know which of those parcels might even be.
So I, uh, staff, we, as staff, I recommend we actually take a step farther back from that. There is a bit of a a legal issue in an arbitrary, arbitrariness issue to have selected twenty-five parcels. Um, it makes the twenty-fifth parcel treated differently than what would have been the twenty-sixth parcel and the line being drawn arbitrarily without basis in um, article twelve requirements or, or other things makes this a very difficult line to, to walk. The open space plan is not something that has been adopted as part of the official map or anything else more sort of codified like that. Um, so regulating based on the contents of a report that draw a line in the sand at twenty-five when it's already been mentioned in conversation, that line could have been at twenty, it could have been at thirty. It's, makes it a, a lot more difficult to craft in a way that's legally defensible.
So it sounds like staff's recommendation is, don't go down this path because from a legal perspective, it is not sound ground. There's too many questions about.
That's, that is staff's perspective at, at this time, that um, basing it based on the, the list of twenty-five parcels is, is not, it's not a great regulatory move. There are ways to capture some of these parcels written differently. And that's a little bit of how, how the PUDs have worked is is the acreage thresholds and other things that apply citywide instead of arbitrarily picking out a specific list of twenty-five.
I, I, I agree with Kelsey, but it, just it's not, it wasn't arbitrary. Yes, there was a cutoff, but that, that was developed by the attributes and the attributes.
Yeah. The, I'm, all I'm saying is, the line at twenty-five was arbitrary. It could have been a report of the top twenty or the top ten or the top fifty. Making that line, drawing that line was not based in a, in, in science.
So for.
There are no, nowhere near twenty-five left because a lot of them have been developed already.
Right. So let's hear from, did you have a comment?
My, my question, Michael, so you, your desire was to not allow those parcels to get any additional density through TDRs. Essentially, they wouldn't be eligible for TDRs, right?
So I think we've heard staff's response to this, which is looking out for the, the good of the city. Does anyone have um, interest in at this time furthering this conversation given staff's position on this at the moment?
I, I guess I would like to, you know, if we, I'm not sure I want to, but if I, if we did, I'd want to know what properties we're talking about. Or how many, how many there are.
Well, I think staff's saying at what line? You know, one report is saying at twenty-five parcels. Do you say at twenty parcels? Do you see at thirty parcels? It sounds like, it's, it sounds like for staff to even do that exercise, it's, um, it's basically not recommended.
I think there are only about ten left uh, that might be eligible. And I, I think a, a little history here.
But Michael, sorry, we're, we are tight on time, so let's, let's keep it to, because we have, we've only heard from you so far on strategy. So I think we get it for now and we'll discuss if it's going to be continued, um, because.
Background is very important. When the city council accepted that report, there were objections to the fact that they gave it no regulatory power. And I objected to it and the counselors at the time said, oh, well, you know, later on, yes, you will, there'll be opportunities to use it in a regulatory way. This was my effort to challenge that.
Okay, thank you. So for right now, we will not, um, am I, I don't want to, I, I'm, I'm sitting in this chair and I'm talking a lot. Are we okay with moving forward? Okay, but we hear you. Um, does anyone else have any strategic comments to make on the document?
I just want to come back to the PUD thing, so.
This pertains to the TDR draft, right?
Yeah.
TDR, okay.
How many of the um, receiving parcels, are there receiving parcels now in the draft that are subject to the TND or the general PUD such that you know, they don't, they don't need to buy TDRs. They can exceed the zoned maximum density without buying TDRs, right? That was the question we had last time and Paul said he was gonna research that and try and figure it out. Do, do we know the answer to that?
We were, we were asked to look into that question in specific zones. Um, so I looked, I, I myself looked at the R seven and R seven NC, there are very few. Um, but the up, the the bigger question is there are an indeterminate number that can be redeveloped. So you have a parcel of, of say, that has townhouses or something on it. It can be redeveloped and, and when, if that ever happened, it would have, things, the TND would apply. Um, the general PUD, you do not get additional density. It's only.
So the general PUD is capped at the zone density?
Yes.
Okay. So then let me just limit my comment to the TNDs, because I, I guess I would suggest and ask that we consider um, for a TND that in order for the developer to build in the TND beyond the zoned maximum density, developer needs to purchase TDRs like everyone else would need to do. To not give that particular parcel, that particular developer, you know, some handout or benefit beyond what everyone else is getting.
I guess my question is, it, it, and again, I struggle with the density thing. The TND, density is determined by building type, correct?
Yes.
So how does that play into?
No, no, but ultimately right. So let's say it's a zone where it's otherwise eight units per acre. And the way that the particular developer arranges the buildings or selects the types, they, that developer would like to build something at 10 units per acre. Well, that's fine, they can do that, but they need to purchase TDRs to get from eight to 10.
They.
So they already have the right to do that in the TND system.
Yes.
No, no, I, I know they do.
Okay.
And we're considering now a change to the LDRs, right? Through this TDR mechanism. And I'm suggesting that they should be on a level playing field with everyone else and have to purchase. In my example, TDRs to get from eight to 10.
They do though.
No, they don't.
They get the density based on their building type in the TND.
Exactly.
The TND is the full, the full scale TND requires a 10 acre parcel. So use of TDRs. I guess what I'm trying, I guess what I'm trying to say is that the use of TDRs is more directed towards areas where there aren't 10 acre, 10 acre parcels left.
In, in the SEQ though, they do have to purchase the TDRs, even in.
Not to use a TND.
No, TND.
Get the additional.
TNDs, they get it for free.
But the, the, the purpose of the TND is that it was designed, my understanding, I wasn't involved in the design of that regulation. It was designed to direct development in a very particular way and require different percentages of different types of land use, encouraging different types of, of residential housing, a mix of residential housing. There is a lot of.
That's all true, Kelsey, but I don't think that's inconsistent with saying that that developer needs to be on a level playing field with everyone else. And they can design that wonderful neighborhood, in my example, at 10 years per acre, using all different building types. They just need to purchase TDRs to get from eight to 10.
My point is that the, my understanding is that the, that PUD was designed that you get the, you, you get your additional density and, and whatever else you're trying to do. Because you're complying with a significantly more onerous set of regulations. And that's the balance that was struck in the TND. I don't know a lot more than that. I wasn't part of the discussions when that went through, but that was the right, the, the balance between getting more density.
We reconsider that. I mean, I, I don't know, I, maybe, I, I'm not sure if it's more onerous, less onerous. What I do know is they get kind of free density beyond the zoning, which seems inappropriate.
I, I would reinforce what Kelsey said, the TND, that we're requiring the developer to go through a lot of hoops to create a very, you know, specific type of neighborhood. I, I don't, I don't agree that we should ask them to, again, purchase TNDs because they're going above and beyond what a regular subdivision would do. They're meeting a higher standard than what just subdivision would be. So I, I don't agree that we should ask them, you know, tap down on top of that. I guess I, I, I think that they're, they're already meeting a higher standard based on the TND type versus just somebody doing a subdivision.
Well, then maybe, maybe different, different standards, I don't know, higher, lower, but I mean, different, right?
We, we hope it's a higher standard.
And they can get extra density through inclusionary zoning.
Well, inclusionary applies citywide, whether, whether it's a parcel that can use a TND or not. So that's an even playing field.
It seems like, you know, they ought to be able to choose to get the extra density by inclusionary or by buying TDRs. You know, give them equal weight.
They shouldn't get it for free. Shouldn't get it for free.
I, I don't think they're getting it for free. I think they're having to meet a higher standard. And I think by doing, by doing what you're asking, we're, we're tacking something on after we've already rolled out this program.
Well, this is in the context of TDRs, right? I mean, I, I know TDRs were intended to be considered during Isaiah thing, but there just wasn't time, right? So this is now, okay, how do TDRs apply to so scheme, right? And how do we level the playing field, given the TDR framework?
Are we, are they, um, saying that they are not able to, because they can only do inclusionary zoning? But if they opted to have a TDR, at this point, they'd not able to, in lieu of.
I believe that was the case.
No, they're.
They don't need to use a TDRs, they get the density for free. I mean, I, I, they get the density by complying with the TND or, uh, the regulation, let me put it that way.
All right, okay. So, well, and this is what's awesome about Andrew's question is that we've only been living this for so long. And I am looking, I, I'm looking for the language that explains why they don't need to buy TDRs right now if they're in the SEQ. I thought that was, I thought that was part of it.
I think isn't the only.
I feel like, here we are.
It was overridden, Monica.
I'm sorry?
The TNDs overrode that.
No, the T, the TNDs only talk about density. They talk about density and allowable and what you're, what are, what is allowed.
Granted the density and overrode the requirement to buy TDRs.
It doesn't say from, from.
Well, you know, if they have to buy TDRs, then I take it back.
So I'm, I'm not, I mean, I am, I'm glad you asked the question, okay? Because this is, um, I would like.
In the Southeast quadrant, TDRs are only applicable in the conservation PUD that has over, is certain amount of land in their development area, right? That's the only place you can use a TND in the Southeast quadrant.
Quite frankly, I think we could reuse a refresher on where the heck TDRs can be used in the SEQ.
You can't, there are no T.
TNDs in the VC and VR?
They can be part of a conservation PUD if they have a certain amount of acreage for their development area.
Right, and they can be part of, and they can be part of the.
VC, or VR or VC development.
Yes.
Are they allowed?
Yes.
And, and today, those developers have to buy TDRs to, to go beyond 1.2 and as TNDs they don't.
I think we need some clarification on exactly where TDRs with, with, because of the, the regulation changes we've made with zoning. I think we could use some refresher on exactly where TDRs can and cannot be used within the SEQ.
I have.
What's great about having a fresh perspective here is that we have somebody asking questions that we all thought we knew the answer to. And we're, and we're saying, wait, what, what? So I appreciate the question.
Thank you.
Because I am, I, I am wondering why I'm not seeing very clear writing that says one way or the other. And I, in fact, I thought we had a conversation about TDRs being required, that they can do it. They just, of course, TDR still apply in the SEQ. So I, I think we could use a refresher.
Yeah, I'm also on record, back when we discussed this, that TDR, TNDs should not be allowed in a conservation PUD.
But that's a separate topic.
It's a different topic.
Okay, so, so, so for the sake of tonight's meetings, that we're already 15 minutes past this agenda item, but it's a great question. I would ask that staff give us a refresher on exactly where TDRs can and cannot be used in the SEQ. And it might not be tonight.
That's correct, but my, my, my comment was broader than that, though. I'd like to understand outside the SEQ as well, if we're transferring density now to a parcel that's eligible for a TND. Whether that developer, say, and there's a parcel right next to it, that's not eligible for TND, that developer is getting really a, a freebie or, because they're complying with the TND strictures, get more density than the underlying zoning without having to pay for it.
So just two points, the table 19, one does list, that's how we've listed what zones are eligible as receiving areas, general, without talking about PUDs at all. So that's a starting point for understanding.
The PUDs are important in that.
Yes, but the, the baseline question is what zones are TDRs available to be received in? That is answered by 19, one. I will look into the interface between the TND and the TDRs and where those things may overlap and how they may overlap.
Thank you, that, I think that's important for us to all be very, very clear on, as we put this forth, okay? Paul, did you have any strategic kind of comments? I'll go last, Ted or Duncan, did you have any strategic? Okay, so I emailed to, and I'm going to try to be brief with them. In our last meeting, Paul did, when I raised this point, Paul was concerned about complicating things. I, I am concerned that the challenges that I have heard from developers do not necessarily pertain to density, but pertain to wanting additional floors in certain areas like Shelburne Road. We know that one particular person who completed a, a building said they would have loved to have put an additional floor on and they would have if they could have. And that their other concerns are the fees. And so in the spirit of looking for other ways that TDRs can help us, I propose that we simply let X number of TDRs purchased provide the right to add a floor, right? And we can decide, what's the number? But let's just say, for example, somebody has a base density of 50 units, okay? And they really, they've only used 40. They only want to build 40 units because they're going to make them bigger or whatever, but they really want to add an additional floor. So our answer would be, okay, you need to buy two D, two TDRs for two units and you will have the right to go to that next floor. Then you can use the rest of your allowed density to fill up your floor, but it would buy them the right to go up.
Isn't that covered in the building bulk side of it? That, that you, you can buy building bulk with TDRs, which would mean another floor?
Well, that's lot.
You can buy lot coverage.
It's lot coverage, it's not going up.
So, right, I mean, the statute allows TDRs to be used for building bulk and only for floors. And I don't disagree with your sentiment, but my question would be, is it, is it legal? Is building bulk and additional floor the same thing? Or can we interpret it to be the same thing? And I'd also love to just hear if Steph has concerns, because I, I actually, I think it's a good idea. I mean, I'm, I think encouraging height in areas where we want to encourage density makes a lot of sense.
So the, the staff perspective on this is twofold, really. One is that height has been dealt with in different parts, at different zoning districts and in different parts of different zoning districts and tapering from being right next to a residential district to being close, you know, closer to the center of a commercial district. There are several places in the LDRs where heights are regulated in that way. A height maximum was placed on most of Shelburne Road as five, five floors, more or less. And part of that problem was that we, there is also the stepping down requirement every 75 feet from the R4. You get an additional floor above the closest residential structure. And then there, there are significant parts of the Shelburne Road corridor in sp, in particular, that you'd really only get two additional floors from a sing, from one floor to two floors to three floors, floors to maybe four floors anyway. Because of the proximity to the, to the Orchards neighborhood and the Laurel Hill neighborhood and those sorts of areas. So height is, is dealt with pretty significantly in some, some other parts of the LDRs. And allowing purchase of height through TDRs would upset some of, some of that. The other, to go to Andrew's question in the, sort of in the middle of my, my response. I think yes, it, I'm not the city attorney, but I would, I would think that building bulk and additional height, you could interpret it that way. What you don't want is a challenge where building bulk is interpreted as volume instead of one dimension. And then if you went up, you'd have to go narrower. Yeah, I think that's, that's a, there is, there is a legal risk to someone making that claim. That bulk is sort of a three dimensional volume, not a dimension in one direction or the other. The more practical side from the staff perspective is with TDRs, with PUDs, with inclusionary zoning, with a, with all of these different things. Adding another metric to, to the TDR program significantly complicates the DRB's job and the job of staff to calculate exactly how many units, how many floors, what you get for which pieces of, you know, how many TDRs you're applying towards density versus height versus lot coverage. Every additional variable makes that additionally complicated in a way that you may not be achieving what you want to be achieving anyway, because you can't exceed heights based on those other parts of the ordinances.
So I guess my follow up to that would be, are there certain areas that we could consider not tonight? Are there certain target areas where it would be appropriate, perhaps in the auto zone? Which is C, auto.
For Williston Road.
Are there certain areas that it could be appropriate? Well, City Center doesn't have a height, yeah.
Yep, Form-based code has its own thing going on and that incorporates a good amount of Williston Road.
Yeah, we just know that this is something that developers have asked for and we want to get our TDR sold so that we can conserve this land. So maybe if there are specific areas, does anyone have, we've heard from Andrew on that, anyone else have concerns about it or?
I like the idea because it increases the demand for TDRs.
Yeah.
I'm just not sure where it would work.
I had language in the original draft, which might help us. Which says transferred residential density may be converted to bonus density on the receiving property by one, an increase in the residential density on the receiving property. That's basic. An increase in the residential building bulk or, or residential lot coverage. And then increase in the building bulk or lot coverage of commercial industrial institution or other uses on the receiving property as set out in Appendix C. So, um, there is, uh, that, it's, it's done in other places in the country. I didn't suck this one out of my thumb. But that sort of gives us, I think, a framework to work with. It's residential density or residential building bulk or lot coverage. And then for commercial, it's also building bulk or lot coverage. We've already used the, for lot, uh, lot coverage in the case of Shearer.
Yeah, my, my concern about calling it building bulk, it will, one, it goes, it does conform with the statute better, which is, which is good in one way. We don't regulate building bulk elsewhere in the LDRs in, in the same way. So it would be difficult to say you are or are not already exceeding a standard that we don't have. So to get, to get additional building bulk, it would be lot coverage multiplied by height, probably. But it's, it's adding another variable that's not otherwise regulated in our table of dimensions.
We could use gross floor square feet as we've used for lot coverage. For each 10,000 square feet of lot coverage you want to increase, you have to buy a TDR.
I think it's a good idea to, to go back and see which areas maybe could be amenable to more height without the restrictions that you mentioned, Kelsey. And then for us to look at it again.
Yeah, just some targeted, because it's, we know that they're asking for it. And so maybe some more consideration of specific areas and maybe a more fine tuned.
So, yeah, just, just what I know, the basics on that. We looked at some, you know, some measurements on different parts of, of Shelburne Road in particular. There is no additional height based on the other height regulations that are in place. You can't get additional height on the east side of Shelburne Road. Because of the proximity to the residential districts just to the east of those districts. There's also a question of adding additional height on the west side and the implications for, for views or for views from Spear Street. There are a lot of other questions on the, on the Shelburne roadside. My understanding is also that the, the five story height restriction on Shelburne Road really hasn't been used. There may be one or two buildings that have been built that even use up to what's already allowed. So adding height, especially in that area, may be something that adds complexity without actually gaining much. And it's just.
Well, there are areas where height wouldn't make any difference to, to the neighborhood. The new buildings were behind the old Shitgo gas station. There are currently five, I believe, five stories or, or four. And another one or two would make no difference to anybody around there.
Well, and we're in a housing crisis. I mean, the community, the public will have an opportunity to weigh in if they're concerned about, about that. But there, and there's a lot of property on the west side of Shelburne Road and to Ted's point, Williston Road. So is, there's opportunities potentially, so.
I mean, we might.
I mean, as I said, most of Williston Road, um, up to the airport or so, give or take, is actually in form-based code.
Up to the airport?
Well, to, towards that pass here pretty significantly. Heinsberg Road.
Heinsberg Road.
And after that, you have the Chamberlain neighborhood.
And then you're bordering the Chamberlain neighborhood and that's a different question.
Okay. I don't know. It sounds like they already looked and they're saying.
If the form-based code is wrong, from a housing standpoint and a zoning standpoint, we need to change it. And, and then, and I've, I asked, uh, before we, before we finished all our current LDRs. I asked Jessica, I'm committed to doing something about enabling us to go up, to build up particularly on the north side of Williston Road, behind all those single level buildings, which are a waste of, of, of land. So it's zoning in the end.
Well, that's, I think that's part of what I've made very complicatedly my point. That height may be something that you actually want to regulate by zoning district. It may, I understand the flip side of using TDRs to.
Secure land.
Secure land. But if height and affordable housing is actually what you're after, they may still have to buy the units using TDRs to go in the additional height. But the height itself, you could regulate much more simply and much more straightforwardly by changing the height restrictions in the underlying zoning districts.
Okay. So I don't know where this fall, if, if this continued conversation falls within TDR or not. But I think you're hearing there's an interest in, in finding a way to tap into this. That does not make it overly complicated for the, um, Development Review Board. So, um, my next, um, uh, one to offer is the other thing we've heard is the fees. This is not something that's in our purview, but maybe we can recommend to the city council that the purchase of a TDR in some way can be offset by, um, their fees that, the, the fees that South Burlington controls. And this would have to be something that said, that the city council can, um, can approve, but it's in the city council's interest to have these TDRs purchased. And if they're willing, the fees are definitely something we hear repeatedly. And if there's a way that they are willing to offset some of the fees through a TDR and the developers get a unit that helps them generate a little bit more revenue. It seems like a win-win. Doesn't even have.
I, 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 I do share those values, but just to be clear, we're saying, we're saying that the, this council should kind of hard code into the regulations. This use of the fee revenue for conservation density, that that's, we're making that recommendation. This particular fee revenue should be kind of hardcoded and not used for other purposes that the council may at some point think are higher priority. Now, I, you know, I personally agree with that. I, 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 I think these, those are high priorities. It's just, it, it does feel a little uncomfortable to hard code it that way.
Well, the hard code, I'm not sure. I've, I've heard.
You're building into the regulations, right?
Well, they wouldn't be building into, it wouldn't be.
Building into ordinance, wherever you're building into.
Right, it would be.
That, you know, this particular revenue stream of fees should be subsidized by the city for this purpose. Rather than those fees going into general fund and otherwise, you know, part of the budget process where the city sets its priorities. You're, you're saying we're going to kind of, you know, I, I'm using the word hard code, right? You, you know, you're, you're directing those fees outside of the budget process for this particular purpose.
Yes.
Um, and I, I tell, from a value perspective, I, 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 I think it makes sense. I, I like the idea of prioritizing conservation. And hand in hand prioritizing the density where we want it. I just also have, um, a gut reaction against kind of circumventing the democratic process that way. I kind of think like, I don't know, the council should do its budget and figure out what it wants to do with its revenue.
Here's a way to think about it. Here's a way to think about it. The fees that a developer is going to pay to get this, this and that might be equal to or a portion of the cost of actually adding another house within an apartment building. And the city will win and it's the direct way to, to gain, to gain a unit.
I know, it's, it's a question.
And, and to care.
Right, it's okay.
Well, it's fungible. So I appreciate your perspective. I think that I, I'm only suggesting that we bring it to the city council as an option for them. And I don't know what the mechanism would be.
With this as an option, council has to consider it. Um, there is something viscerally that offends me about it, but on the other hand, I, I do like the idea of promoting conservation and densing in the right places.
So if anyone else has any, yeah, so what would be the right way to get that message to the city council, Kelsey?
We can relay that to the city manager and she can, she can do what she needs to do with that.
Cool. All right, we are way past the agenda. Anyone else have any other items? So what we did not do is get to the draft at all. Do you want to talk about specifics within the draft? Does anyone have specific comments or should we move that to the next meeting? And maybe instead have a thumbs up, thumbs down on sharing this preliminary draft with the public for comment, which we have not definitively decided on.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't change, uh, the changes that I made that were substance related, I outlined in the memo. If anyone has seen something that I put in the memo that they're particularly concerned about, I'd like to hear about it now so I can make that change. Otherwise, most, if not all of the sort of track changes and other sections are for consistency and clarity and, um, connected references, honestly. So there's not a lot that I would think needs to be discussed in there. But yeah, I, it, it would be important to know if this is something that the planning commission would like to move it. I don't think we're at a point where it makes sense to move for a public hearing today. Um, that's, there are additional changes and additional discussion that needs to happen. A vote on whether this is something that can or should be shared with other committees, with outside members of the public. Anything like that, that would be appreciated as well.
So circling back to the comment Andrew brought up before, which is, I think some basic refresher that I am all of a sudden really questioning myself on, which is very clearly where within the SEQ are the TDRs
Yep.
required or eligible? Um, and, and are they within the SEQTNDs or not? It seems like we should have an answer to that before we just release something to the.
And I think, I, I think I do have an answer to that, but it's not something that I could verify in the context of a meeting. So I would at least need some time to, to make sure that what I believe is true is actually true.
So if our next meeting is in two weeks and.
It's in three weeks.
Oh, it's in three weeks.
This is a five Tuesday month, so your actual, your next meeting is on June fourteenth.
So does anyone have an opinion on, on whether we share this document, suggest that we share this during the next three weeks for initial feedback for any major flags?
I think so. And through this PUD question is material enough that it deserves to wait.
Cause that'll push off the resolution of this.
I mean, we've agreed certain changes this evening already, so let's just get those into the draft and then.
Do you want to make a motion, Andrew?
On?
On not sharing with the public until that.
We need a motion to not do something.
I mean, I don't think, I don't think formal.
Okay.
A straw poll, if anyone, if anyone strongly believes they want to share this draft with the public today. I'd love to hear that. If not, we will, I will look into the questions that have been raised um, and circulate that information as soon as I can with the commission and then I can move on at the next meeting.
My view is we should wait until we've got it tightened up a little bit.
So, so that, let me ask for thumbs up and thumbs down on two issues then. The first is, um, do we at some point agree that we want to share a document to get feedback before going to a public hearing? Okay, so let's do thumbs up, thumbs down in general, not this one, but in general. Who would like to have this circulate for key, to key, to key targets for feedback before a draft for a public hearing? Okay, so it's three to three. Kelsey?
I don't vote. This is, no, three to three, three to three doesn't pass.
So it passes. Okay.
Does not.
It does not pass? Does not pass.
Does not pass.
Okay, so we are not going to get feedback from the people that would be using this. Okay.
Right.
Um, so then, um, the next question is, um, do we want to hold off on releasing this for public hearing until we incorporate the most recent changes? And the answer I think is yes. So we're going to wait on this draft. Um, of course, this draft is part of the public, um, packet. So anyone who is watching the meeting or anyone in the community that comes upon this packet certainly read it.
So when would we?
But we will, what staff won't do based on all of this is we won't reach out to developers, the other committees, things like that, affirmative, assert, what am I trying to say? There's another A word that I'm not remembering.
Assertively.
Um.
Portable.
Proactively, it's not an A word, but that's what I meant. We won't ma- take that step to proactively talk to, to people about this.
When would we have this warrant for a public hearing if we're?
So the, I mean, the early, so the next meeting is June fourteenth. Um, that would be the earliest that you could have an, a vote to warrant for a public hearing. Um, the very quickest you could do it after that is about a month, um, based on different notice schedules and every, and the other paper and all these things. With me being, with the planning and zoning department being down staff over the summer.
No, you're adding.
What? Yeah, that's right. Not very helpfully. I can probably guess, but, um, my understanding is that this would be pushed into August, um, for a public hearing.
So it'll be plenty of time for people to.
Yeah, absolutely. It would be, it would, if it wa- if it was moved to a, for a public hearing on June fourteenth, the earliest it would go to, that public hearing would be scheduled, would be sometime in early to mid-August. So there would be plenty of time for people to review and, and provide additional feedback and comments.
All right. So thank you.
Well, let's, yeah. Do we know how many, um, TDRs there are available still?
Approximately fourteen hundred.
Okay. And, and is it likely that they could all be purchased at some point? Or are we, just by our configuration now, it doesn't seem possible?
That they, i- in that, could they be used?
Yeah, used.
Um, yes.
Okay.
Can I make just one more comment on the TDR scheme as a strategic thing before we wrap this up? We did talk in the TDR committee about the city potentially, um, facilitating or even managing, um, s- some kind of, let's call it a bulletin board or some system where there's more transparency around who has TDRs they want to sell, what price? And who, you know, and what the demand is, who, building something that maybe wants to, because right now it's incredibly hard for the supply and demand to connect to each other. This is, it's completely opaque.
That's fully within the intention of, um, city management and the staff to develop. It is something that's actually
Okay.
some lightly required, um, to, you know, maintain a map of available TDR, things like that. It is not something that we currently have the staff capacity to take on, um, but it is something that we are hoping to figure out the.
And you don't think we need to say anything in the LDRs about that?
No.
Okay.
Kelsey, can a TDR be used? Can a TV, can a TDR be purchased? I know it can. It can be purchased without knowing where it's ultimately going to be used, right? Like it could be purchased like a stock.
You could hypothetically speculate on TDRs and buy ten of them and just hold them be- betting on the value going up. Yes.
I'm believing.
Yep.
It's a, it's a property, property right, like, like anything.
I think, um, so it's see, and that's more in, um, in Jesse's camp, right?
What is?
Is that what you were saying, developing this market? So this is not, it's not in our purview?
It, it is in, um, how that happens and how that is budgeted for, because it is additional, you know, staff time and other things. Um, that can happen primarily on the staff end.
Okay. But it is important. It happens. Okay, so we have, um, two more primary items on the agenda. And do you want to do both of them or we are at eight twenty-four? We should have started item six. We have not started item five yet. What would you like to do?
We've gone late before.
I know. I'm just asking. Be polite. Should we keep going on, uh, on to number five?
Um, so there are two, so there, I guess I should have announced this at the beginning. The, um, discussion between the city council and the planning commission about the comprehensive plan values and goals is likely to be at a, a planning commission meeting tentatively on the twenty-eighth of June. That's a super tentative date. Um, my understanding is that city council would attend a regularly scheduled meeting of the planning commission for that discussion. So hypothetically, that the discussion amongst the commission doesn't have to happen at this meeting if that is not occurring until the twenty-eighth. So that's an option that we can move that out. I was hoping to get through both of these items, but I understand that we've run out of some of our agenda time. Maybe it might make sense to reverse these two items to, to approach number six before number five. Cause you may just be happy with number six and it will be a five minute discussion and then we can use the rest of our time for, for number five. Cause, cause the vision and goal statements is, is much more open-ended. Than the comprehensive plan, approach, outreach plan and tentative schedule. Um, and in the in- interest of moving, moving things along. Just scrolling through my packet. The, so I guess, I guess that's, that's a question for, for the commission about reversing those two numbers. Is that something that would be acceptable?
Thumbs up for reversing?
Okay. So we've provided you with the tentative schedule for the completion of the full comprehensive plan. We've provided the outreach plan, um, the basics of what we're intending to do. How we're intending to reach underrepresented groups, um, and provide different and differently organized opportunities for people who maybe not are the traditional audience that we get at public meetings and public hearings to engage in this process. Generally, the approach is that we'd like to really open this up to the public. Um, get a lot of public feedback and take public feedback and public input and funnel it down through committees and through the planning commission and through staff and incorporate it into a lot of the meat that already exists for the twen- from the twenty sixteen plan. So it's not starting over. It's enhancing what we had in twenty sixteen, taking out things that are no longer relevant, of which I don't think there's a whole lot. Beefing up the things that are relevant and maybe are even more relevant now than they were eight years ago. And, um, really working on setting the foundation on the public outreach portion of it. Instead of it being, like we were saying before, with the TDR draft and with other regulations, we tend to draft things and then give it to the public and look for feedback. We're hoping to flip that a little bit with the comprehensive plan and get a lot of robust public feedback early in the process that then gets incorporated into drafts that then would go to official public meetings and hearings and things like that.
So how are we going to get that public input in the first instance? What, what is the mechanism by which the public will be able to tell us what they want?
So there is a, um, an outreach plan that we have included. I'm just trying to see what page we're.
Page five, that packet.
So I have it on page thirty.
Obviously, it's, it's just of that.
Oh, of that section of. Um, so Paul wrote a pretty significant memo, starting at page thirty. Talking about the approach and the targets and outreach and yes, Duncan is correct on page five. Of that section is a lot of our strategy for, for public outreach. So it's everything from our social media channels, the other paper, other traditional media channels. Um, tapping into events that our rec department is already holding, um, community, community events. Holding separate listening sessions, separate from the planning commission, how, having an online poll that is going to be starting up in June because it's connected also to ARPA and the climate action process. And then a few other options. Is it, does that answer your question? I mean, number five is.
I think, what I think is missing and was very effective in the past, that we call them visioning sessions. They were professionally facilitated, big meetings for the public. Um, with, uh, you know, materials provided by the city and oops, facilitator would start the ball rolling and then the ones I remember, the crowd was divided into groups, small groups. Each to work on a particular aspect of the planning commi- of the comprehensive plan. And, you know, we ended up with the usual, um, end product with charts pasted all over the, uh, over the walls around the room. Charts pasted all over the, over the walls around the room. And then staff consolidated all those comments into a document that was usable. And then we moved on from there. I don't know how else, I, I don't think we will get effective public input through public, through. Social media and the press. We might advertise that we want them to come to these sessions, but input. I think there's nothing better than live. Debate and development of ideas.
Maybe, maybe it could be in the various neighborhoods, Chamberlain Orchard. You know, so the schools respect us. People have a very far way to go.
Well, I, I mean, I was gonna, oh, go ahead, Paul. Sorry.
Yeah. I was skeptical of the approach that you suggested, which I believe is the approach we used with the. The airport rezoning task force, that there really isn't kind of anything of substance for the public to react to. But you're asking for the public's input anyway, like the initial input came from the public. And I, I really was skeptical about it at first, but it worked remarkably well. It was really, really effective. I mean, people turned out, they spoke, you know, they were clear, they were articulate. And they were forceful about what they wanted and didn't want. And they were listened to. They were not ignored. And a lot of the public hearings that, because I participated in since being on the planning commission. I felt that people, that it was sort of a pro forma kind of testimony and then. All right, thank you very much. We're not going to pay attention to anything you said and what's next on the agenda, you know? So I really, I was surprised by that approach and thought it was really effective. It was, it really, the recommendations came from the people. They really did.
And, and that's something I'd, I'd say is we're, we're hoping to engage with as many people as possible on a very broad level. At the beginning of the process to, with very open-ended, very broad questions about, you know, what do you, what do you, what do you enjoy about South Burlington? What do you prioritize about South Burlington? What do you want, what do you hope will happen in the future in South Burlington? Some of those very big, very open-ended questions, because as I think Paul was alluding to. We really, if, if we could predict what everybody would say, we wouldn't need to talk to the public at all. And the fact that we can't predict what people are going to say or what they're going to value or prioritize is why we want to do this in a way that opens it up really early. And we're hoping to design this in a way that it, it reaches as many different people as possible with as many different life situations as possible. For various different reasons. So kind of meeting people where they are, people who are participating in rec programs or who attend SoBo Night Out. Or who bring their kid to the touch a truck program or have five minutes to answer a six-question survey on their phone. But they have no, no more time than that to engage in the process. We're hoping that using a variety of different things on top of more in-depth, more intense meetings. Will help shape. The comprehensive plan in a way that reflects more of South Burlington than maybe has been achieved. Through, through, through formal meetings only in the past.
It's bottom up rather than top-down planning.
I, I think the challenge is to, how do we reach those people who just, you know, for whatever reason, don't really participate in. You know, our community events or, you know, it's a challenge for them to speak English or have a lot of time. How do we reach out to those folks?
Yep. And so that's, that's a goal of, of what.
Yeah.
Of a lot of the things that we're doing is, so anyone who has ever interacted with the city in an online, you know, you ever signed up your kid for. You know, five-year-old soccer or you've ever paid property taxes or something, you're on a listserv to receive the city news. So we're hoping that will reach a lot of people attending different events. The recs, the rec department actually sponsors an outreach event in the Feral Street area. A lot of people living in multifamily housing, a lot of renters, a lot of affordable housing, different groups that we don't necessarily hear from all the time. So we're working through different ways to, to reach those groups by, by approaching things a little bit differently.
No, that would fit in with Ted's suggestion to do it by neighborhood. Get them, get the neighborhood together. I think it would be a lot harder to get them all to come here.
So what do you need from us for tonight on how can we help you with this? I mean, this looks, looks like a great plan. Was our feedback helpful? Is that what you're hoping for?
So there's a, there's, I did include a possible motion at the end of the agenda memo. Just to kind of approve what we've set forth as the generalized approach and the tentative schedule. The other thing that I just wanted to preview for everybody is that because of the breadth of. The breadth of events that we're trying to cover and the different things that we're trying to do. We are also hopefully expecting participation from planning commissioners at, at some of these events and, and meetings. The nature of a lot of these things is that it's, you end up talking to someone for two, three, five minutes, one-on-one. If there's only a couple of staff people there, you're not reaching as many as you could if we had a three or four of you also attending the events. So when we have some things more scheduled, especially the rec events that have a specific date, we'll let you know and hopefully can get some, you know, buy-in from all of you.
Can I then suggest to not schedule those events during normal working hours?
Yeah. So this is, this is generally evenings and weekends. Things that, that working, the people who are working would be attending, anyway.
Those, those visions, visioning sessions or working sessions that I referred to were all in the evening.
Yep.
And they were very well attended.
Okay, great.
Is there a motion?
Truly, we're, we're talking about the, the vision and aspiration of the residents of South Burlington. When we talk about a comprehensive plan.
Yeah, and the participation of commissioners is sort of two ways. It's both. You all hearing directly from, from people you don't normally hear from and also all of those people seeing you and putting a face on both. I think is a good priority for the city in this process.
They feel like they have a pipeline with us.
Exactly.
Just Andrew, your point's well taken about not during working hours, but I think with maybe. A meeting or two for the elderly who don't want to, you know, go out and about. So just some flexibility.
Schedule some during non-working hours.
All kinds of diversity, time, date.
All right.
Location. Yes.
Paul, do we have a?
Sure. I move to approve the proposed approach to completing the twenty twenty-four update to the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Can I ask a question before you vote on that? Are you going to add anything about live visioning sessions?
So we, we have planning commission listening sessions listed. I can expand the dates. I can.
I think it has to be more, more specific, Kelsey. We have to have it, it has to be facilitated.
Okay.
But, and yes, we can be there, but I don't think any of us are professional facilitators. So that's important.
I can add that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. All in favor? Anonymous. Here we go. Great. So now we can hop on over to number five. Which is back to Kelsey.
I would just like to say that I don't like the goals.
Is there any way to throw up the page with the goals and the paragraphs on the screen?
I guess while that's going on, I'd like to ask Paul why.
I thought Kelsey's proposed wording was much better, just sustainability. Resilience and equity. I thought were really good goals. These goals don't seem like, don't seem to have any ring to them at all for me anyway.
You want both things?
He was actually saying, thanks a lot.
There we go.
You can move your chair up.
So this is what we currently have, which was written.
This is a page from the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan. This is what is currently adopted.
I mean, the first word to me works me because the reality is.
We're not there.
We're not affordable.
It's not walkable.
And, and it's.
And it's.
But these are goals.
These are goals.
They're goals.
But you want to feel like, I mean, this, this goal was set, you know, going on eight years ago.
Yeah.
And we didn't make it.
Well.
We're working.
Not, not all of it was within our purview.
No, I know that. I know. I know that. And we did, we have done things to dramatically improve our, but anyway, it's just my comment.
What does clean mean? Does that mean we have street sweepers or what?
Why, I have some comments on that section.
So just a couple of points of background. First of all. These were, these are what are, this is what's currently adopted and this is. A joint project of the planning commission and the city council. So the city council's priorities and wording and all that will, will need to be taken into account when this is discussed with them. What staff is envisioning generally is that some of the wording in these visions and goals. While in somewhat intentionally vague at this point are too, is too vague. Putting more meat behind some of these things is certainly warranted at this point. But to also note that these are the foundational statements that are underlying very specific goals and targets. In the rest of the plan. It's a three hundred and something, three hundred and eighty. It's a very long plan. So it's not necessary to put all of your specific targets in to these goal statements. Just jumping ahead a little bit, the comprehensive plan, the strategies and objectives that are included in the specific sections later in the plan. It is also our intention to put more. Metrics on a lot of those strategies. A lot of them say things like, you know, use more renewable, this is one that's in here. Increase renewable energy production or reduce energy consumption. It's extremely vague. So things that, putting more targets, putting more metrics, measurable things in the strategies and objectives is something that we're hoping to do in the plan overall. It's not to say you can't beef up these, which I think it would be a recommendation that these, these can be certainly strengthened. But you don't need to worry about going to specific percentages or targets or anything like that in this part of the document.
So we'll, we'll get everyone's.
Yeah.
Idea. My, one of my questions is, it, it seems to me like. The Climate Action Task Force is going to drive so much that it would be wonderful. Now that's, the report is not till September. But, yeah, because it seems like that in itself is going to have so much language that will be helping us create our foundation. I mean, that, that is going to be our foundation, period. That and equity, inclusion. So I just, that's just my comment that it's, I feel like we're, we're having this conversation and we're not all involved with that.
I guess, I guess my.
Yes, yes. So that's good.
And I think my response is that a lot of what the Climate Action Task Force is working on in the report will be incorporated throughout the document. And will be incorporated in much more specific ways throughout the different sections. Where what we're doing here is trying to affirm and, and update. The core values of the city that then are fleshed out through the other sections.
No, but obviously the detail true, but, but it's, it's really important, I think, to have these core values. Set the foundation and the few ones that you pointed to, I, I do think with minimal additional words can be much tighter and focused. Well, I sent around, I don't know if we want to get into substance now.
I cannot access my.
Oh. Yours was to do with the green and clean.
Green and clean. Yeah. I mean, I, I, I didn't have, I mean, that, that's. I, I'd like to take a look. The other ones too, the green and clean is the one that jumped out at me is needing a lot of work. So, and I'm happy to jump in, but if that's what you want to do, Monica.
Um, I could take just a quick step back. I know that Paul has expressed wanting to change some of these. But I'm wondering what others are feeling about this sort of four, four value structure. Is this, are these four things that are driving, still driving values for? South Burlington?
No.
Is there something dramatically different that needs to be included? Or are we talking more about beefing up and being, being more accountable to the goals that are already here?
We need to change, I think the core value is going to be related to climate change. And what, what the comprehensive plan says we can and should do about it. I think that's going to be the top, for me, that's the, the, of these four, that's the first. And we don't have to call it green, green and clean. We'll have another, another name for it if you like. But I also looked at that particular. Objective green and clean because that's kind of related to climate change and environmental protection.
I'm just going to give a little background. I, I was, I kind of came on towards the commission, towards the end of this process. And I do remember at one point, I don't know Ted, if you remember this or not, but we, we did have a, a, a quick synopsis of this. And I remember, I can't remember if it was Jessica or who it was, talked about really, you know, you could put a lot of stuff here. Or you could try to still it down to the essence of what the values were. And that was kind of the. The, the yin and the yang of it, what, what to, you know, how do we take? Four points or three points or five points and really determine what, what do we value for the city? You know, and it just sort of simplify it and put it down in a way that it goes, yeah, I'm on board with that.
Yeah, look, I, I certainly, as people may know, agree on emphasizing climate change. I don't think the ways to set out conflicts with that and certainly the other goals here are also important. So I, I don't know, Mike. I, I personally, I don't, I, I think the way they're articulated. I, I think organization is okay. I mean, we do need to. Put a climate change lens over some of this, but. You need transparent, accessible government and you need affordability. I mean, you, you need all these things too.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think it was a lot of deliberation, a lot of input. I think they're still relevant today. And I think, you know, some of the subparts are, are need to be changed. Obviously establish a city center, da, 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 that, that's done. Maybe some kind of embellishment, but I'm not sure if that's a needed highlight, but I think the four categories are fine and.
I'm not suggesting we should eliminate any, but I, I am suggesting that we would need to meet somehow in here. We need to have a goal, which is to, to meet the city's climate goals and prepare. The citizens of.
Would I draft it?
I think so.
Okay.
And prepare the citizens of, of South Burlington for the effects of climate change. But meet the goals that we're going to set for ourselves.
So I have a comment to add. When I was looking at this page. I don't want to say that the, what's in orange is dated, but I think it would be interesting if we look at, for example, affordable and community strong. What did it mean? And what does it mean today? How would we potentially, if it, if we agreed that the concept that's there. Is still important to us. is still important to us? Here we are eight years later nearing. What, how, how would we say that differently today? What language would we include differently? Like to me, as an example, just to say affordable is kind of today in today's world, it just feels so unattainable and not realistic. And, and to me instead, a word like inclusive and diverse in that the reality is we have all kinds of housing types here and we need to always make sure we have housing for every type, everybody. And we all need to be a community, you know, within that. So we're an inclusive, diverse community that has a home for everyone that, that, you know, whatever that, in whatever way. That's not, that's not how I say it there, but this, that's my reaction to what was written, you know, going that many years ago to, to now. And I wonder if some of these others, does that, is that an interesting exercise for you? Is there something that's missing?
Yeah.
You know, is there something that, is there something that strikes you of the four? The last one to me is, well, I'm curious to hear from the two people that were, were here. What the opportunity oriented? Well, I don't know. That was the, not, it's not that it's the, the weakest to me, but it really felt like it was missing a now. And I'm wondering what the intention was of the opportunity oriented language and how we would maybe say that today.
Economic to some extent. Yeah.
Kelsey, where did you come up with your words, sustainable and resilient and equitable? Those seem like good words to me.
So those were just raised in discussion amongst the planning staff and the city manager, city manager's office, things that are priorities now and need to be priorities into the future that are not necessarily already reflected in, in here. I think some of what Monica is going to is some of the equity discussion and some of the resiliency discussion. I can see opportunity oriented being tweaked a bit into something closer to sustainable and resilient or, you know, something like that. But that's just my, my perspective on, on those words.
Because the opportunity oriented, again, I'm thinking of, of today, we are losing people that are critical to our community's functioning. Nobody can hire anyone. Okay. You see, hi, you know, we're looking for employees everywhere. And there are people that aren't taking certain jobs because they can't afford to live here. They're not staying here. They can't afford to live here. So when we say, going forward, when we look at economic strength and development, that too needs to be a job for everyone, a job for all, all types of backgrounds and experiences. There are, there are landscaping companies that are closing because they can't, they don't have staff to keep things going. I mean, this is on, happening on all levels. Thankfully, we have companies like Beta coming in and they're, that's a wonderful class of job that's coming in. But I think that we, we need to look at our economic growth in, in a more diverse manner going forward and enable people to take jobs here of, of all kinds and be able to live close enough, if they can't live in South Burlington, you know, close enough to get here to-
I mean, I think this, this speaks to how interrelated these four things, even if you kept it listed as these four things, how interrelated they are. That, you know, if it's, if it's not affordable, then it can't be opportunity oriented because you can't find employees because people can't live here. But if people can't live here, they have to drive from farther away and that affects, you know, our carbon budget and everything else. Like these things are all very interconnected. Okay. So it's, these things shouldn't be thought of as for individual vision and goals. It's, it's really a framework that works together towards a greater, toward, towards all of these things that are discussed more specifically.
Okay. Is there a member of the public that wanted to make a comment? If you'd like to, you can turn your camera on.
It's a phone.
Or let us know. All right. So-
Needs to unmute himself.
When they do, then they're welcome in. So was there more-
This would be, just thinking about community feedback. This would be one of those things that would be great to put out to the community and say, here's four things. What do these mean to you?
So this is something that's already being put out. Yeah.
Great.
The, the first round of community outreach is the city council is working on the exact, exact wording of it, but it is a, a short online survey that will be promoted through a lot of different channels and through in-person events and everything else that deals with these four items. And likely also the possibility of ARPA funding being spent in different ways. And yeah, so that's, that's something that's, the, the wheels are in motion for, for that.
So what is your hope for us for tonight then, if that's happening currently?
Yeah.
There is, because that would be helpful for us to hear as well. So what can we do tonight to help answer this agenda item?
So I just wanted, for today, and the reason that I was happy to reverse the agenda items is I just wanted to open the dialogue to make sure that we're all thinking about these. We're thinking about what was used in 2016, what you might be wanting to change into the future, both generally and with specific edits like Andrew circulated in advance of the work session between the planning commission and the city council that will happen.
So would it be appropriate for me then read, read my edits and we can discuss them? So I, again, I think Monica, your comments on particularly the first paragraph were, were great and right on point. But I guess the green and clean thing kind of jumped out at me has probably needed some work. So I, and I'm not wordsmithing here, but I think it would be good to have climate change in somewhere. So I just changed it to be green and clean, semicolon, climate change focused. Maybe there's like a, a niftier, catchier way to say that, but, um, and then I said emphasizing, basically pick up the words sustainability for long-term viability, but clean, green and climate change focused South Burlington. Okay. Then I basically took this and subdivided it into three bullets. So I pulled out the historic and recreation stuff from the first bullet, because that struck me as a bit different than everything else that's in that first bullet and rewrote the first bullet to say acknowledging the criticality of achieving climate resiliency, strive to conserve all remaining natural resources area in South Burlington, including remaining forest mows, grasslands, farmlands and wetlands. And what I had in mind for that is we would strive to do that through purchases by the city. TDRs, regulation, maybe incentivize people to privately conserve, like I intend to do, and I know no intent to do, but strive to do that. I think it's important to have that as a, as a goal. Then the second thing I said was meet or exceed the goals of the Vermont Global Warming Solutions Act through three things. Rapid reduction in the consumption of fossil fuels, significant increases in rural energy and promotion of energy efficiency. And then I added a third bullet, promote conservation of historic sites and structures and recreational assets, basically pulling apart that first bullet. So those, those are my comments. Promote conservation of historic sites and structures and recreational assets to not lose the thought that's kind of embedded in the, in that existing first bullet around those things.
What does that have to do with climate change?
No, it doesn't. So this, it, we, and we could agree to drop that last bullet. Honestly, Ted, I just didn't want to inflict that much damage on what was here already. So under green and clean, someone thought that it's important to promote conservation of historic site structures, recreational assets. I, I, I also tend to agree that's something we should promote. And I didn't, I didn't want to lose that thought. We, we can agree to lose the thought, but I, I, I kept it there.
I'm all about recreational assets.
So I'm keeping, I'm keeping it there.
Keep it there. Don't go anywhere with those.
So that, I'm, thank you for reading that. Cause I, I'm still not able to access my, my Esper or new email, but, um, so that was the first time I heard it. And so, but as you were reading it, I was asking myself, I mean, those, those are, where is the planning direction in that specifically? Like, and, and is that, you know, that, I guess that's what I was looking for.
So as a quick clarification, the comprehensive plan is something that's undertaken by the planning commission as, as one of your roles. It is the comprehensive plan for citywide policy. It is not just the comprehensive plan for land use planning. It underlies all policies and all priorities going forward for all the different bits of the city.
So example, when he said, reduce reliance on fossil fuel, then I guess the strategy for that would be for the city, not just the planning commission though. The strategy would be, you know, add EV everywhere, add EV stations or whatever.
Yeah. So you take, you take what's in these foundational statements and then it gets broken out in all of the other areas. And the other areas, the, the rest of the plan is, is broken out more topically, housing, transportation, recreation, things like that. And all of these four core values touch each of those sort of topic areas. So if you're talking about reduction of fossil fuels, it may show up as net zero homes, but adoption of EVs and the school districts or-
Right. I'm just trying to understand the, because the, my, my background always says, if you set a goal or a, you know, a vision that's too broad, it doesn't give you a direct enough executional path.
I guess, I guess the, the context is that this is not, this page will never be a standalone document. It's only a standalone document because I pulled it out of the PDF. It goes into all of the other things that do have more concrete objectives and strategies in very specific areas and everything from promoting the development of city center because that promotes more walking and biking and less car, you know, everything gets trickled down through the rest of the topic areas of the plan.
I think the best way I heard it described, and again, I can't remember who described it, was this, this is the glue that holds the plan together. You know, everything, everything sort of relates back to what's mentioned here and somewhere or the other. So you got to get it right here.
This is the, the 10 commandments and then you have the whole Bible that follows.
If you're into that kind of thing.
You get it right here, you go from there. But so I, I guess what, what do we-
Yeah. What do we, what's-
You-
My, my primary goal in this discussion was to open the discussion, to get everyone thinking about it. There's nothing that needs to be moved on or, or accepted or not accepted. There, it's, if there's anything specific that the planning, that the commission says, you know what, you know, cut walkable, we hate it, you know, so anything like that, that would be good feedback to have. But it sounds to me in general, like we're still, we've run out of, primarily run out of time for this meeting, but at this point.
But Kelsey, so you're not going to say, try and turn or redraft this based upon the discussion tonight?
Yeah. No.
You will. Okay.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to, we'll be working on it. It's just, I'm just trying to make sure that we all acknowledge that, and whatever doc, whatever comes out of the planning commission is not the final version. Yeah.
For example, I had a commission, I mean, a comment on walkable for myself, which was, don't mention automobiles. You know, we, it says, develop a safe and efficient transportation system that supports pedestrian, bicycle and transit options, period. Forget about while accommodating the automobile. We are already doing that enough. We don't have to repeat it here. In fact, we want to become less auto centric. So, you know, those are all the little tweaks that we might see in here, but they have a major impact throughout the document. And there's the green infrastructure.
We might say while, while discouraging automobile.
So I, the, I guess when I look at what my comments were earlier, I would ask that you try to find a way to put the first and the last together. To, I mean, we were kind of saying that, but I think these two bullets need to be, these two notions need to be together, like you were saying. It's, and we need to be able to live here, all of us, and we need to be able to work nearby at all kinds of different levels. And putting those, those two together, I think would be very helpful in my, in my mind. And shoot, I had another one that-
Can I raise the point? Would, would it be helpful to you, Kelsey, if we all committed to give you our feedback on this document by a certain point and then you could come up with a draft?
Well, we want to hear back from the, the, the public.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, if, if we want to put our initial thoughts in, Andrew obviously had some stuff. I know Michael was talking about some stuff. If we all-
Just to understand the process. I mean, are we going to ask the public to react to this or ask the public to react to our revised draft?
The, the public is, will be asked to react to the existing four headers.
Not with all the words around.
There's, they will have access to all the words around it, but the, the, the bare bones of the small, the targeted survey is, is the orange and the, mostly the orange.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the, at this point, the outreach consists of basically for each of these, like, do you, how, do you think this reflects South Burlington? Is this the direction that South Burlington wants to go? Do you think that we've made progress on these things? You know, those sorts of questions about the existing language that would hopefully inform further changes.
When would we see that feedback?
The feedback from the public. So the intention is that that poll would be available for a good amount of June to get as much feedback as possible. I believe the plan is to get it back before you have the discussion with city council, but there've been a few moving parts that have changed and I'm not sure exactly what date that feedback will be available.
I remember what my other comment was. And I remember this came up when we were talking about, maybe I wouldn't know what other committee I was in. South Burlington is a pass through city. You know, it's got Shelburne Road because you can get to Shelburne. It's got Williston Road because you can get to Williston. But we all are, we are our own community as well. And I feel that finding ways to create community strong and have our policies focused on the community and acknowledge what are we actually doing to support the drivers, the people, the passengers by? We want passengers by to stop in businesses and, and by and all of that. But are there other things that we're doing with our planning that's really focusing on, on their experience driving through us rather than the quality of life that the people here have? And I personally find some of our policies are a little bit more directed at how pretty are we when people get to drive by us? So I don't know where that fits in. It has to do with community strong. But I would look to this next round of comp plan being about the quality of living here and focused on that. So I know that's, I, I could list a couple of examples and I won't, but I'm not sure where that, where that fits in. I think acknowledging we're a unique setup. There's not many cities with our, with our layout. We're a very odd place and we have a lot of people driving through us without being part of us. Which creates a very unusual circumstance.
One other, last meeting, you all sort of had a, your, your own visions and so on. And actually Jessica sort of picked up on something that I've sort of made comments ad nauseam, but with regard to parks and somehow trying to be more emphatic here. And I'm trying to see if there's any wording that gets close, but that as we build out, we have to, and we've had this discussion about, you know, parks and, and available space and quality of life and so on. And I, I don't, I don't get the sense that that's being emphasized here enough that we're really, as we consider a major development or a project, is there something else that we might be able to say about that? I don't, I don't know what the wording would be.
Yeah. And that goes, some of what I'm, I've been thinking about too, that, I mean, we are Vermont. Even if we build a five story building that's on Shelburne Road, it's still Vermont. And people want to be in Vermont. It's not, you know, some of us have lived in New York City. We're never going to be in New York City, nor should we. We're Vermont. You know, there's, we like outdoors. We have cold weather. There's, but there, so what is it about us? And make sure that everyone that lives here, no matter their circumstance, is part of- There's, but there, so what is it about us and make sure that everyone that lives here, no matter their circumstance, is part of the Vermont. Experience. It's not reserved just for those who can be here or there. And that goes to the access to nature and fresh air and.
And, and it goes to, I mean, the, obviously, there's been discussion about the southeast quadrant and, and, you know, the socioeconomic disparity. But I think it's an opportunity where there is building in the end, quote unquote, inner city. That that disparity could be assuaged a little bit by having at least more green space.
Yes.
I said, I don't have a magic bullet, but.
I agree. Is there any other comments? Kelsey, is that what you're looking for for tonight?
Because you've received some input from Monica and from Andrew and from me already. Right? I guess. Could leave it at that and you, you can mull them over and come back to us and ask questions or.
I guess I'd like.
Tell me I'm full of bull.
I guess I'd like to encourage Paul and Duncan and Ted, if you have specific thoughts or, you, you know. High level, low, like very specific, very broad, whatever it is. Just because I have received other comments from others. If you wanted to send those to me, I, I'm very happy to look at them and if you don't, then, then you don't. And that's, that's totally fine, too. I just wanted to make sure that that was very clear. Um, that that's something that I would be, be happy to, to look at.
Well, I, I agree with Paul's comments, too, that the, the words that you were using definitely were more compelling to me and, and. Includes. Strong foundation for a lot of the things that I'm thinking about. So I, I agree with what Paul said.
The one that sticks out to me is kind of wonky is walkable.
Yeah, it's a little specific.
Enhance that. I understand the principle, but it seems kind of.
Yeah, because we'll never be in January fully, I mean, walkable.
I mean, is it, it's. I guess the question I have is, is it just the title that's the problem? You know, distilling it down to walkable feels a little hyper-specific, but maybe if it's more related to. Diversity of transport options or. Availability of services or, you know, things like that, that are a little bit broader.
Accessible.
Connection, yeah, come, the connection of the community.
Or the ability to access green space.
Yep.
Right. I mean, we have the new bridge coming, hopefully during this next comp plan's life. The new bridge will be built, right? And that is, you know, we're really, talk about a connection. It's, that's, that's not reliant on a car. That is, you know, really. Pushing forward. Non-motor connectivity.
We're making it back walkable and bikeable.
Maybe just, maybe walkable, bikeable. Might, might capture it just as a, as a caption, right? Just.
Or skiable. Discussing this way back, we were trying to connect some of the neighborhoods that are not connected now, like off of Van Sikklen Road. You know, that's, there's no way that someone, yeah. Unless they really want to hit it hard on that, on that hill.
I've done that. It's scary taking a left turn on one sixteen.
It is, I do it every day. It's scary as.
Well, and to that point, that's a good, something we should.
At the airport as well, the neighborhood out there, that's sort of almost.
A country called the state. Nobody, three quarters of the city doesn't know that.
I know, it's a gem, but we need to connect that, you know, get in safely. But anyway, those are two.
So it's connectivity, it's more, like, the, under the walkable heading is, is connectivity is kind of an underlying thought.
The goal should be every neighborhood in South Burlington should be connected.
Right.
Nice to.
Connected with non. Automobile option.
It'd be nice to enumerate the neighborhoods. Know, we know a few of them, but I don't know how many of them we actually know. You know, we have the front porch forum that gives you, I think, nine.
Seven. It's seven. I, I get all seven of them. I think there are seven.
The southeast quadrant is not a neighborhood. It's probably a dozen neighborhoods, right? So it'd be nice to know what the neighborhoods are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Monica had made a suggestion. To me, in a conversation, which I thought was terrific, it, it might help us with this, but it will help us with other things. Monica suggested that each commissioner should. Should cover, drive around or walk around or bike around South Burlington, at least covering the entire city once a quarter. So that we get a sense of. What it is, because they're. They're parts of the city that I know very little about.
Did I say that?
I don't, I, I don't know the context of how they fit in. For example, the country club drive on the, north of the airport. Now, obviously, I know it now because I've made a point of going there, but there are other parts of the city that I probably don't have a clue about. And. It might help us frame some of the things that we want in this comprehensive.
We could have the street of the week. In other words, someone could come up with a street and ask anyone if they know where that street is. I'm being facetious, of course.
I know exactly where it is. Or will be.
Can I suggest we?
Well, we have, are you good with this? Okay, good. So number seven, we have the minutes. Now, I sent a change and so that's not reflected here. Should we wait, Kelsey, or was my? And Michael has a change.
I have a change, yeah.
Do you want to communicate that to Kelsey directly or do you want to do it now?
I could do it now. It's just, it's just the. The motion. Denying the. Airport's rezoning request. There are a few words missing. Um, if it's on page.
So you know what, Michael, since because of the time, would you mind just sending that to Kelsey? Because she has to reissue it with my change anyway. Okay.
That was your motion?
Yes.
Yeah, so if it's, if you're edit, if, if people, if someone is editing their own statement, then I'm, I'm happy to receive that by email.
I'll just, I'll send it to you.
Okay, perfect.
It's just a few words that are missing. I had a question that maybe you can all help me with. Paul had noted that. There were a few instances where expanded wetland buffers resulted in a conflict with residents who want to add a deck.
Yes.
To their home. What, what was the outcome? Was there a discussion about that? Or is it just something?
No, it was, it was framed as sort of a FYI, that's something that's come up in the planning department that we've received a few. Applications for, for decks or deck expansions that now are not possible because of the expansion of the wetland buffer. It's not something we have time to go into today, but it is a topic to be discussed at a future meeting about. Whether there want, you all want to have any tweaks to how those wetland buffers are applied to existing single-family homes.
So I think that probably falls into, again.
That's similar to Rick.
To our public comment before, like, yeah, another LDR cleanup.
Yep.
So, and it looks like there's no, so we'll wait on the minutes and it looks like there's no other business for today?
Nope.
Okay. So I think that would do it for us. Or is everybody good? Hey, hey, hey. Thank you. I believe we are adjourned. Everybody good?